For Watertown City Council Meeting for September 16th of 2024. Please rise while Hank Rosso, the Chaplain for the Watertown Fire Rescue, leads us in prayer.
Thank you for joining me in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, as we gather together, we first want to say thank you. What a blessing it is to be called to serve and be a part of such a great community as Watertown. Thank you, God, for the services that we enjoy, those who protect us, our police department, paramedics, and our firefighters, the EMTs, all of those first responders, Lord. We often take for granted until we see that flashing light, and we thank you for each one who serves so selflessly. We thank you for even our garbage service and those who help keep our streets clean. We're overwhelmed by your goodness, and so we want to say thank you. Thank you for the group that's gathered here, these leaders here and their investment of time and talent for our community. We ask, God, that as you're here, that you would give wisdom and insight and patience and understanding, and we thank you for this common bond we share, and that is our love for our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Before we say the pledge, I'm going to give Councilman Tupper the microphone for just a second because Watertown lost one of its own this last week, and he'd like to say something.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember Laverne McPeak. To me, Laverne was one of the silent heroes of the city of Watertown. Laverne spent 30 years of his life, a little over 30 years of his life at the police department, 14 of those being chief of police, and then he spent eight years on the city council. That gentleman gave a lot to this community. I'd like to take this moment to remember him with a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant Director Strickerts, would you please call the roll?
Hollein.
Here.
Jerrans.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Shuddy.
Here.
Tupper.
Here.
Bueller.
Danforth.
Here.
Quorum is established. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda with two changes. We are going to remove item 7F from consent and put it at the end of tonight's business and other business. And then we have a little bit of, there was something that changed from last city council meeting. So at our September 3rd meeting, we approved a, basically a fireworks permit for the homecoming for Great Plains Lutheran, and we had it down for September 26th. Unfortunately, something came up, and now the 26th no longer works for Great Plains Lutheran, and they asked if we could just move that from the 26th to the 24th. But in order to do that, we need official council action. This is something that we approved at the last council meeting. We're just changing the date. I didn't think that anything would be untoward about it, and we need to do it ahead of time so they can have it for next week. So unless there's council objection, I will put that on the agenda under consent, and then we will just do away with it at that point. So does anyone have a problem with adding that at the last moment? Okay. Thank you very much. So we've added that. With those two changes, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Turn them over.
Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Bueller.
I didn't hear, didn't know who that was. Now is the time for open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to...
You got to vote now.
Oh, oh, sorry. Thank you. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now it's time for open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so.
Who would you like?
Just sit down there, make sure the green light is on, and when you speak, just make sure you announce who you are and who you are representing, if you're representing some entity. If it's just yourself, just say yourself.
All right.
And you've got five minutes.
Oh, five minutes. I'll get going here. My name's Rick Wyland. I represent an organization called Dakotans for Health. We are the sponsors of IM28, which is the repeal of the state level on the grocery tax. I wanted to address the council because I understand that you've already taken a position and hopefully by the end of my presentation, get you to reconsider. There are always two sides, right? And I don't think you've heard the side that I think really has all the facts.
Just so you're not speaking, we haven't taken any action.
Oh, you haven't? Okay, good.
Oh, we did. Oh, sorry. Yes, we did.
Well, okay. Well, maybe you didn't. So maybe you can start the process. First of all, let me just start out by telling you what this is really about. There are 106,000 South Dakotans, according to Feeding South Dakota, which are food, they're food insecure, and of them, one out of six are children. Food insecure defined by Feeding South Dakota is they don't know where their next meal's coming from. That's more than 10% of our population. Some of these families spend upwards of 30% of their household income just to put food on the table. South Dakota is one of two states that still taxes food at the full allowable rate, the next state being Mississippi. There have been 20 years of discussions in Pierre about doing something about this tax. Even Governor Noem came out, if you'll recall, in 2022, when she was running for reelection, saying that this was going to be her number one priority because it was the right time and it was the right reason to take care of this because people were hurting. People are showing up at the grocery stores, prices are out of control, and we're taxing what they need to sustain their lives, unlike 40 other states, 48 other states. I have to tell you, I don't agree with Governor Noem on much, but I did agree with her on this issue. And I was rooting for her when she went back to Pierre, reelected, and was hoping that the legislature would get this done. I mean, with 94 Republicans and 11 Democrats, you thought it would have been a slam dunk, but it wasn't. She failed, but instead they opted to cut, what was it, .3%, three tenths of 1% of the state sales tax across the board, which I think cost around $100 million a year. Now, there is an opposition campaign, and you've heard from them. They call themselves South Dakotans Against the State Income Tax. You know, for me, that's the biggest tell of all. This is a campaign based on scare tactics, deception, and hypotheticals. I mean, you realize, in order for a state income tax to ever pass in South Dakota, it would have to happen from two different directions. One, here, and I just don't see that happening in my lifetime. I cannot imagine that the Republican Party would all of a sudden become the party championing a progressive income tax. And two, it could happen as a ballot initiative, and I don't think that's going to ever happen either because there's simply no support for it. What it is, is it's a scare tactic, and they bring that one out a lot whenever there's something like potentially the repeal of a food tax. That seems to be the horse they like to run around the track. There are a lot of other hypotheticals, and I'm not going to be able to get into all of them, but a lot of the arguments from the other side are may, might, could, shall, no, not shall, it would be like possibly. And these hypotheticals are creating sort of a different reality out here, that this could cost upwards of $646 million because the sales tax is going to come off of services, gasoline, toilet paper, pharmaceuticals, and that's just not the case. One thing you have to keep at the forefront of your minds is that this went through the process. This is the petition. It went through the LRC, and here's what the language says, and this is particularly acute to what you do here as council members here in Watertown. It says, notwithstanding any other provision of law, the state may not tax the sale of anything sold for human consumption except alcoholic beverages and prepared food. Municipalities may continue to oppose such taxes. Thanks for the wedding. So there was a fiscal note that was generated at the time that went along with the petition. That fiscal note came from the LRC, and they stated that by removing the state's share of the tax on food, the 4.5 or 4.2%, you would see a reduction in revenues of $123.9 million. Now, it also says here municipalities would still be able to collect the tax. This is what the voters are going to see when they go into the voting booth. This is the official position of the state of South Dakota. Now, I know the municipal league has sent out this memo warning, and I think creating fear for every city council in South Dakota, that you're going to lose X amount of dollars. I'm telling you, that's not the truth. I know I'm almost out of time. I sent around a little opinion editorial. It was published yesterday in the Dakota Scout in Sioux Falls, and I don't know if there's an opportunity for questions, but there's so much more I could go into, I wish I had more time.
Thank you very much, and thank you. Yeah, that was right about time, so thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something not on tonight's agenda?
Thank you.
Yep. And just to explain, we have a policy. If someone comes and speaks on open forum, we don't allow interaction between the council and the person, but at the end of the meeting, if a council person wants to bring it back up, then we can have conversation about it. Just state who you are and who you represent, and if you're representing yourself, then just say that.
Thank you. Councilmembers and City Manager Mack, my name is Kyle Lallem, and I am here on behalf of the vote yes for Cottington County. It is a, we're a portion of the group that has, of concerned citizens that have gotten together to help educate the community on the bond initiative that'll be on this year's ballot to approve funding for a new Cottington County jail. My reason for being here tonight is to invite the residents of Watertown and Cottington County to join us for an informational meeting being held. We're going to have two. The first one's going to be held at 5:30 on Tuesday, October 1st, at the Heritage Theater at the Watertown Event Center, and that'll coincidentally coincide with the State Sheriff's Convention that'll be here in Watertown. And the second public forum and information sharing session will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 21st, on the fourth floor at Lake Area Technical College. The idea behind these public forums is to educate the public, the voters of both Watertown and Cottington County, on the cost and benefits to voting yes on this year's ballot initiative to pass a new jail on the November 5th general election. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the council in open forum? Anyone else? All right. I will close open forum, and we'll move on to item 9A, an approval of a bid award for the 2024 miscellaneous drainage project to Level Contracting LLC in the amount of $129,630. We'll go to our Public Works Director, Heath Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've got a conventional bid award here for one of our planned capital improvement projects for 2024, miscellaneous drainage improvements. It includes a few different sites, as shown in the council packet, primarily just locations that are in need of culvert replacements, which includes then tying in some additional roadway surfacing work and base course and things of that nature. So to accommodate all that, we received a good handful of bids, and the low bidder was nearly 30% lower than our engineer's estimate, coming in at just shy of $130,000. A portion of this project will be paid for by FEMA funding because some of these damages to these culverts were due to the spring flooding event that occurred, and that is to the tune of $64,000, almost $64,500 that they will be funding. So roughly half of this cost will be funded by FEMA reimbursements. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Let's open it up for questions and comments, council. All right. Hearing none, hearing no questions, no comments, we'll just go to a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the bid award, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 10A is a first reading of an ordinance zoning text amendment to Section 21.1003, Non-Residential Height and Placement Regulations, and for accessory structures of summary of district regulations of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. Public Works Director, Heath Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. There are a handful of these first readings here this evening that went through the planning commission at their last meeting. This first one, I should paraphrase or give you context, most all of them have to do with some housekeeping items in our Chapter 21 zoning ordinance, a number of things that we've just wanting to, as staff and as a planning commission, address and adjust according to the number of Board of Adjustment applications we've been receiving for variances. This one in front of you right now, being first reading, relates to setbacks for accessory structures primarily related to the C2, the C3, and the I1 districts. These are setback numbers that are currently set in ordinance that commonly receive applications for variance. Anytime that we see a recurring application for variance for the same thing, and that variance subsequently gets approved, that's a pretty good indicator that we need to look at updating our ordinances to accommodate a common factor that the Board of Adjustment isn't finding any problems with approving, and rather make it the norm rather than an exception that needs to be applied for variance every time. So that's what these setbacks are trying to address, and there are a number of them in each one of those districts, as shown in the council information packet. If you wish to talk through any of them in detail, I will stand by for questions, along with the Community Development Manager, Hampton, and we'd love to help answer anything necessary.
Thank you, Director. This is a first reading, no need for official action. Open it up for questions and comments. Hearing none, we'll go on to item 10B, also a first reading of zoning text amendments for residential garage district of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. Director Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. Another effort of cleaning up some of our ordinance language. The primary change in this chapter, this section of Chapter 21, relates to the RG Residential Garage District approvals, the process that the applicants have to go through in order to get approval to rezone property as RG. Residential garage district allows for a garage to be the primary structure. All of our other districts prohibit that from happening. As far as our residential districts are concerned, you can't build just a garage on an R1 lot, for example. You have to have a primary use of a house, a dwelling unit, on that lot. RG, however, allows you to build just a garage in those zoning districts on your property without having a domicile or dwelling on that property. But with that, in the past, we have required the applicant to go essentially door-to-door to their neighbors to get approval from them for a certain circumference or distance from their property or adjacent to, and that alone is just a little bit of an antiquated process that we're unplugging from this ordinance, and rather let the rezoning process take care of that effect. And when you conventionally rezone something, public notices are given, and we really, for some reason or another in the past, treated this rezone a little differently, requiring the applicant to go knock door-to-door to their neighbors and ask their thoughts on this rezone. Well, rather than putting them in an awkward position, we've struck that language, and would rather that this rezone go through the same process as every other conventional rezone, with the public hearings, the public notices, opportunity for people to speak at the planning commission meetings, subsequently at the city council meetings, and not put the applicant in that awkward position of knocking on their neighbors' doors. That's one of the primary changes here. There are a few other ancillary changes throughout here, but again, I would stand by for any questions, along with Manager Hampton.
Thank you. We'll go straight into those questions, comments, council. All right. I'm not seeing any. Item 10C is another first reading on zoning text amendments regarding the administration and enforcement of the revised ordinances of Watertown. Director Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. This section amendments are probably more expansive than the previous two that we've talked about. This relates more to the function of the planning commission, the structure of the planning commission, how the planning commission is established. So 2102 is the administration and enforcement of Chapter 21, the city's zoning ordinances, where it thereby establishes a planning commission and a board of adjustments, and it defines how that planning commission is structured, how that board of adjustment is structured, what the roles are as those two bodies act separately and autonomously from one another, their advisory relationship to the city council when acting as a planning commission, and their quasi-judicial function as a board of adjustment when they're acting in that capacity. A lot of the changes in here have to do with just modern updates to the language on how we truly operate and language and terminology that's truly more customary to the planning and zoning industry, not only in South Dakota, but nationwide for that matter. One small change, for example, we reference our planning commission as the plan commission. Well, it's more customarily known as the planning commission, so that's one of the simple changes that you'll note in the amendments. A couple other ones to highlight that are of more substance would be the use of alternates. The current ordinance reads that the mayor shall appoint alternates to the planning commission and BOA. We have struck that to say that the mayor and council may appoint alternates to the board of adjustments. After vetting that language with the planning commission, they agreed that it not be as big of a necessity to have alternates for the planning commission as they operate, but because of the majority needed for the board of adjustment decisions, having alternates might be critical on that board for the sake of continuing to carry out business of the city. So that was one of the modifications that we made. One of the issues we were having and why that change was brought forward, the presence of alternates, as you can imagine, it creates a different dynamic on a board. We have a park and rec board, we have an airport board, we've got other boards within the city that are advisory to the council, that generally don't have an issue with meeting a quorum, and I'm not saying this is the reason why, but by having alternates, the function of the board inherently carries out differently. You know, members of the board feel a little bit more relaxed on, okay, I maybe don't need to be there, somebody will be there to cover me because we have alternates. I'm not saying that we don't have committed board members, so please don't take any of my comments in that regard, but it just creates a different environment on how that board operates. Not only that, it creates a different environment in how the applicants operate by playing the field on who's going to be at the meeting that night, which is not a good situation for us to have as a community when it comes to planning and zoning decisions being made. We want to be as consistent and uniform as possible with those decisions, so the more consistency we have with our board members, the less chess-playing might appear to happen on the applicant's end. So there are a few different reasons like that why that change was brought forward to be proposed to eliminate alternates, but it was left, ultimately left in there that that may be done, not shall, but may be done. That was probably the biggest change. There was another substantial one, looking at Manager Hampton, trying to remember, another significant point I should make, but I think I've covered generally the brunt of it, and could stand by for any other questions or discussions on this one.
Thank you. Another first reading. We'll go straight into questions and comments, council.
Wait, don't we have an opportunity to, for questions?
Yeah, that's what we are doing now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. My bad.
Yep. So yeah, do you want to start us off?
No.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you were moving on to a different first reading. No, just some comments. I think, you know, it's been a good thing, having the opportunity to put alternates on some of those boards, and I recall on planning, we used to struggle a lot to get, you know, a quorum so we could vote on things, time after time. But I think it's important to make sure that the folks that you do, if you do put alternates on, if it's necessary, if you've got a board that they're showing up all the time, it's not an issue. But if you do have to put somebody on, you might want to look at maybe bringing on for alternate some people that are past members of the board, you know, that have some experience, but if nothing else, if you bring some folks on, they really need to, you know, we really need to make sure we train them, just like we would our regular board members, but there's no question at times, it's necessary to do that, I think.
Councilman Tupper?
To Councilman Bueller's point, there will be an onboarding process that will go along with that. That will take care of some of those issues, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And Director Von I made a good point of it's two different boards, Board of Adjustment obviously being different because they're, in order for something to pass, a lot of times you need a two-thirds vote, and if you're even, if two members of that board don't show up, you automatically lose any chance of it passing. So Board of Adjustment might be treated slightly different than Plan Commission, which would not be uncommon in communities in the Midwest, so, but, Councilman Bueller?
Thanks, Mayor. No, just for our viewers, so they understand that the planning commission is the Board of Adjustments as well.
Yeah.
The same members serve both purposes. Thanks.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. We'll go into 10D, a first reading, amending the zoning map of the city for property legally described as Lot 5, Block 5, North Lake Drive, addition from R1 Single Family Residential District to RG Residential Garage District. Director Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. This is coincidentally an application for an RG rezone, one of the sections of our zoning ordinance that we just got done talking about amending. I'll share my map to teams for a point of reference. We're out here on North Lake Drive, and this property that's hatched here is what's being petitioned to be rezoned from R1 to RG. And as you can see, right adjacent to it is our two additional lots that are currently zoned RG. The one immediately adjacent is, I believe, the same owner. I'm not sure about the other one, but I guess frankly, that's irrelevant. But this lot is being petitioned to be rezoned RG, and I believe it was recommended to be passed unanimously, yes, by the planning commission at their last meeting. Again, this means they can build a residential garage on that lot. If this were to be approved, they're not required to have a primary residence or a primary structure such as a house or residence on that lot. It can be a standalone garage structure similar to the lot adjacent to it. With that, we stand by for questions.
Thank you. And this is a first reading, so we'll go straight into questions and comments. Anyone like to say anything? All right. We'll move on to item 11A, an application for a transfer of ownership of retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License, and Video Lottery License from Rodney Parent, doing business as River Card Casino, to River Card Casino and Westside Laundromat at the same location. Assistant Finance Director, Strickerts.
All the required paperwork has been submitted at the notice of All the required paperwork has been submitted, the notice of hearing has been published, and all fees have been paid.
All right, I will open a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the transfer? Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Council, any questions, comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the application of the transfer. All those in favor will please say aye.
Right.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11B is a second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for a portion of property in Watertown Sales Pavilion, second addition from I1 Light Industrial to C3 Highway Commercial. Director Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. Another rezone, this is the second reading, so your decision tonight here on this would make this final, whether to approve or deny it. Application to rezone a portion of a property, let me pull it up on my map, share my map, I should say. This is a Crocker's auto body along Highway 20, south of Fourth Avenue, and you'll see that a portion of their property is not zoned uniformly with the rest of it, so it's simply what they're trying to do is make it all one uniform zoning district, which of course is normal, clean planning and zoning practice that we would like to promote and see happen. So no objections from staff, nor from the planning commission, voted unanimously to recommend approval to the city council. And again, it would take the portion of that lot that's currently I1 and make it uniformly all one C3 Highway Commercial District. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing and open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the amending of the zoning map? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. Is that one lot of record today, or are they actually different lots of record?
It is one parcel that's recorded at the courthouse, and I do not believe it's a platted lot. Community Development Manager Hampton has requested the applicant to bring forward a plat to create a platted lot upon the approval if this rezone were to go through. So we would be cleaning up the plating of it to make it one formerly city-platted lot, but right now, it's a record of, it's a parcel of record, is what it's otherwise known as at the courthouse.
But not a platted lot of record?
Correct, but it is a one uniform parcel of record.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All right, the motion is to approve the amending of the zoning map. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, say nay. Assistant Director Strickerts, please call the roll. Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item 11C is a second reading of an ordinance authorizing the finance officer to certify the property tax levy of the, to the Konington County Auditor. Assistant Director Strickerts?
This is basically, as you said, just the second reading to send it off to the county auditor. It's based on our 3% consumer price index, and then you add to that the estimated growth that is set by the county auditor each year, so we are at a 4.05% property tax levy that would be approved tonight.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the authorization? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Council, any questions or comments? All right, hearing no questions or comments, we will just go to a voice vote. All those in favor of authorizing or the authorization of the property tax levy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12A is an acknowledgement of the intent of the city staff to appeal the preliminary firm maps to FEMA. Director Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep this as concise as possible. There's a lot of backstory and information that's gone into this item before the council here tonight. As some of the council may not even be aware, we've been working with FEMA for a good few, three, maybe four years, oh, several years, on our, updating our firm maps, our flood insurance rate maps. For any community to have coverage in the flood insurance program, you have to go through FEMA's exercise of creating these flood insurance rate maps, and what those firms establish are the floodways and the floodplains within the community, and every so many years, they need to be updated. As development occurs, as flow patterns may shift or change over the years, things happen, and we need to update these firm maps, so FEMA goes through that exercise of updating them. As they've gone through several years of work in updating our flood insurance rate maps, we've finally gotten to a point where they've got the preliminary maps ready for public review, and they're now open for public comment, or what they know, what they also call is their appeal phase, where you can review these maps and issue an appeal as a property owner, you can review these maps, issue an appeal as a community, and that's what this resolution before the council tonight is about. The staff, after reviewing some of the information here over the last several months, it became pretty apparent early on that there are some key technical pieces, components of their work that we, that are simply enough to raise several eyebrows and question what's going on with the technical data that they're using, and if we were to let them proceed with that technical data that we feel is errant, we would end up with some flood insurance rate maps that would not serve our community well for years to come. One primary example that you'll know, it's in the council summary, is that the, these firms, they also establish what's known as a base flood elevation, and that's the guiding elevation. Adjacent areas have to build to or above, depending on what our ordinances read, in order to be protected from the floodplain during heavy storm events. Well, the base flood elevation at Lake Compesca is currently 1724.8 feet, and their proposed base flood elevation at the lake is 4.3 feet lower than that, and so what that would do is dramatically drop that 100-year event elevation and give this false sense of security to homeowners that think, oh, well, I'm not way down here near the floodplain, I can get rid of my flood insurance. Well, we know by practice, by real events, that BFE is a lot more accurately stated as it is on today's maps, not as it would be proposed on the new maps. And so that's one of the glaring things that came across our desk, that we realized something's off with the technical data that they're cranking out, that FEMA's consultants are cranking out. You've got to keep in context, when they do these maps, they're looking at several counties in a region, they're not looking at Watertown, South Dakota specifically, they're looking at multi-county land area that they're updating firm maps for. So it stands to reason that, you know, some specific technical criteria or data point could be missed, but that one's pretty glaring to us. If we were to adopt the new maps, there were nine events, nine rain events in the last 20 years that would have equated to a 100-year flood event, which again, is telling, something's not right here. So what we've done is, we've got a letter drafted, we consulted with HDR Engineering, who did some work with another community in eastern South Dakota, very similar work, reviewing the technical data in FEMA's work and writing a very technical response on why we feel it's inaccurate. So with all that being said, we are in the appeal, appeal window, they have a 90-day appeal window, and we wanted to bring this forward for formal council acknowledgement, that we're going to be submitting this appeal letter and asking FEMA to reconsider these draft firm maps and get with us and/or our consultant to figure out where they've missed the mark on some of their data and calculations, and hopefully produce something that's a lot more accurate for our use for years to come. With that, I do need to acknowledge Manager Hampton has poured a lot of work into this over the years. The city engineer position by ordinance is the city's floodplain administrator, but Ms. Hampton has by far taken the reins on that through her certified floodplain management certificate that she has, and so she's been the point person on this project, really since its inception, at least since I've been here six years ago, so she knows a lot more of the technical details on this than I do, and if you guys have any more questions or want any more information, I'd be glad to, she'd be glad to assist as well.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the intent of the city to appeal the firm maps? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Jurens. Let's open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Von I, wouldn't, it seems like normally, this seems like it's backwards from what we normally have to fight for, you know, where they raise it and we have to, we're trying to get them to lower something, but in this case, isn't it, doesn't it work against them to lower it to what's proposed? I mean, because if we, doesn't that just bring more liability to everyone and potentially them by lowering it versus keeping it where it's at?
Yes, there, you could have several trains of thought on that, where, I don't want to speak in hypotheticals about the flood insurance program across the country, but generally speaking, the more participants you have in an insurance program, the more heavily financially sound that program is, and you're absolutely right, by lowering this base flood elevation at the lake by four feet and giving several homeowners, property owners, this false sense of security that, hey, I can get rid of my flood insurance now, when that nine out of 20 storm events comes knocking on their door and they get flooded and they're not insured, it creates havoc for the community, it creates havoc for those property owners because of that false sense of security. So whatever angle you want to look at it, yes, you'd think it would behoove the FEMA program, the flood insurance program, to retain as many insurance premium payers as they could, because that keeps a more financially sound insurance program, but in this case, I think there's just a technical bust on some of their calculations that needs to be looked into and corrected.
Just a quick follow-up. So does this, is this pertain only to the lake, or does it pertain at all to city property at all?
There were other discrepancies throughout some of the other tributaries and along the river, I believe, where there were some discrepancies noted as well, not quite to this extreme, but still, data did not look appropriate, and so we've noted those as well in our appeal.
And that'll be included?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Director Von I, any speculation on how they could make mistakes like that?
Um...
Or, let's say, come up with different numbers than what would seem common sense?
You know, I don't know, it's only speculation on my part, and I'm not sure Manager Hampton ever received good, clear, she's asked this question for months on end and hasn't really gotten good, clear feedback on, not even a, whoa, you're right, that looks way off, no constructive response to that regard at all, which has been concerning to us, and we've just been told to wait till the appeal period and submit our findings then, and that's what we're doing, so I, it'd only be speculation, other than what I cited earlier, they're looking at a huge area, this consultant that works for FEMA, and to the extent they're drilling down in any one community is beyond my knowledge, but I'm guessing that has to play into, they're looking at a macro level of redoing flood maps for several counties in this, in this whole region. I forget the number of counties involved, but it's, it's a pretty substantial area, land area, so I'm thinking that's where they maybe missed the mark on some of the detailed analysis within some of the communities.
Okay, and Councilman Jurens, I'm sorry, I should have gone to you first. Councilman Jurens?
Thank you, Mayor. So the industry I'm in has forced me to dig into the zone where these people are living and how the zones affect the rate in their pocketbook. So are we saying that if they end up getting these maps to go through, that some will not have to pay flood insurance and some, in a lot of cases, will be able to lower their rates?
Yes, that's what would happen, but again, I would heed caution of that because it's a false sense of security, knowing where our flooded waters rise to year in and year out.
I understand, yeah. I do have a follow-up.
Follow-up?
Do we want Brandy to comment?
Yeah, Community Development Manager Hampton?
Thank you, Mayor. So with that, it's something that we could decide as a community, if we wanted to have a four-foot freeboard, as far as when people would build for new construction. Today, we have, so our base flood elevation is 1724.8, and we could, or, and we have the freeboard of one foot, so if somebody builds a new house at the lake, at Lake Compesca, obviously, base flood elevations are different everywhere with the different watersheds, but then they would have to elevate by either fill or just by raising with crawl space construction and whatnot, they have to raise their lowest finished floor to be at the elevation of 1725.8. So that still could be an option that we would have as a community in our ordinance, that we would have an extreme freeboard, which out of protection for the community, so that somebody was not, so we would always have the one foot because we participate in the community rating system, so we're required to have that one foot, but then that, if these new maps would be adopted, that would only be at 1721.5 feet for elevation, and we just flooded in 2023 at like 1722.6 feet, and that's not a 100-year event. So out of protection for the community, so that people don't have that false assurance that they're building this brand-new home and they're meeting the freeboard that FEMA would require, we could do that ultimately to, out of protection, but then there's still, you know, if they do lower the base flood elevation and then people don't have to pay flood insurance, I mean, people like that, so it could be just, but it really would be out of, out of protection for the community of keeping that freeboard.
So, Mayor, if I may, so what Brandy's referring to is the regulatory components to the BFE. That base flood elevation is theoretically your 100-year flood event water elevation, and if we falsely set that way too low and people cancel their insurance premiums, and we know every nine, every 20 years, we have water higher than that, we're creating havoc for the community that just canceled their flood insurance premiums and aren't going to be protected from those events almost 50% of the time in 20 years that we've actually witnessed. But that, that freeboard that Brandy refers to comes down to the regulatory compliance as we issue building permits, which is written into our local ordinances. At a minimum, that base flood elevation is the lowest elevation you can have for a structure at its entry level. The freeboard you require over and above that is up to each community, and normally it's a foot, but to have four foot required is pretty excessive and out of the, out of the ordinary, rather than just addressing the maps and making sure they're designed more appropriately and more accurately. But that is a true statement, that we could have a four-foot freeboard and require people to build that much taller or higher than that base flood elevation. It would just be an abnormality that isn't common to have that much of a freeboard requirement. A little bit of semantics on regulatory side of it there, but... A little bit of semantics on regulatory side of it there, but that's, things we could work through with our local ordinances, in a nutshell.
Councilman Jurens, did you have anything else?
Oh, I do.
Okay.
So I hear a little bit about individual freedoms, and I think a lot of people like that ability. I think through some education, to motivate people to keep flood insurance may not hurt. But if we can, through community development or through council action, are you saying we could keep that current, hey, you, you should build at this level? I would be very interested in hearing more that we can keep it, you know, at the same level that we're at right now for your regs. I, I like the level that we're at. I wouldn't ever, you know, it'd be crazy to build below that, especially when people hear a little more about things with flooding the next evening or so. So can we, as a city or as a council, keep that set at 1725.8 and still allow those that, that want the financial freedom of not paying? What's happened is with regulatory since 2010, banks, even if you have a $20,000 balance on a $700,000 house, they're requiring flood insurance. And the flood insurance companies require that you insure it at, at least 80%. So they're spending tons of money. So we, we get to see both sides of this. And if we give them the financial freedom to say, I'm taking that coverage away, I don't know that we want to fight FEMA. That's just my opinion. But can we keep that setting of new construction where it's at?
Yes. So as far as the NFIP and what's required for flood insurance, if they do lower the BFE, you know, that's the insurance side of it where if they're not in the floodplain, then there's not that requirement that they have flood insurance. So that's out of our control. But no, we, we still control as far as what elevation the home would be built at, out of protection. And that's just through our ordinance. So that is separate that way, but then we have to go above and beyond the one-foot freeboard and set a four-foot freeboard, which honestly is good for our CRS rating. But altogether, there's just concerns with what's being proposed in these firms, not only with Lake Compesca, but our other watersheds too, with the Big Sioux River and Willow Creek. So, and it was really helpful what HGR had pointed out in their memo that was submitted with the council agenda, that they were able to analyze the model and dig into that. And I think there's discrepancy with different models that are out there and what they used. So it was really, that'll be really helpful, I think, in FEMA reconsidering what, what these technical issues are, and then hopefully refine the maps where we don't have to go that free, that, that route and that we get things a little more ironed out, I guess.
City Manager Mac, you wanted to interject?
Well, I have, I have a legitimate floodplain question, and I hope I get the words out correctly. So if FEMA lowers the elevation and these homes are removed out of the floodplain, and on the personal side, if they drop their flood insurance and it floods, they are, they're on their own. But from a community perspective, don't we often see with, with flood events that there are FEMA dollars that can come into a community? So if we are allow, I don't know how I'm trying to ask the right question. Are we still going to be eligible for FEMA dollars if a flooding event happens, if we're allowing or not allowing, but if the elevations are wrong? I don't know if you're understanding my question. I just want to make sure that whatever we end up with, we're still in consideration for those disaster dollars that, that may be available, both on the city side and on the personal side. As we've seen in other communities this summer, you know, FEMA's come in with some significant dollars for the individuals. And if they're not part of the flood insurance program, are they going to qualify for those dollars if an event happens? I don't, I really don't know the answer to that.
Director Van I, are you, okay, if I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So yes, we would still qualify because that would be a FEMA decision. And then even right now, you know, for the individual homeowner, it's probably, you know, depending on whatever their elevation is. And that's what makes it kind of, that's what makes it messy of not having accurate base flood elevations presented on, or you know, for our adopted firm maps. Because the, in, the other, the hindsight, like, or the flip side of that is that it maybe would allow some homes to be more, like qualify for like a first-time homebuyer and whatnot with not requiring the flood insurance. However, for the most part, it would be detrimental. But us as a community, we still would qualify. And then even with, when there's a disaster declared, like right now FEMA has put out the, it's the SWIFT something grant for all of this, all of the flooding and wind and whatnot, all the storms and disasters that happened this year that even our community would qualify for if we have like a repetitive loss property that could be mitigated through any of these dollars, just, and that's through the flood mitigation program. But no, so it would still, long answer short, we would still qualify. If that is answering your question, Manager Mac.
If I could, Mayor. Councilman Jurens, it's, the floor is still yours?
I, I do have more, but if there's others.
Councilman Tubber?
I guess, you know, pretty much my question, I think, was answered by City Manager Mac's question. So that does put the city at more of a risk for infrastructure if they would change that. Is that correct statement or no? As far as FEMA dollars?
Meaning, sorry, Councilman, not quite tracking the question.
So with, with city infrastructure, so you go back to the flood of 97, when, when all the lift stations went down out the lake?
Yeah.
Would that put some of that in jeopardy if it was, if that firm level was different?
So what it could do is, you know, manager Hampton and myself aren't going to be here for the next 50 years, and the numbers might change in 10 years, we don't know. But what it could do is set a false standard for people to design to, because those pieces of infrastructure do take into account what the base flood elevation is. So that base flood elevation is a critical component of every community that you want to have as accurate as possible. And, and when it's leaning more towards a two-year event than a 100-year event, that's, that's very blatant that something's wrong in that BFE being established. Again, nine out of 20, or excuse me, nine times in 20 years, so roughly every other year, every two-year event, we're exceeding water elevations that they're proposing to be a 100-year event. So the, the math just isn't working out. If I could go back to Councilman Jurens' question about the setting that BFE, yes, absolutely, that does address the new construction or major modifications to existing structures, but that would not address or protect those that aren't doing any modifications. Those, those properties that are in that window of what the BFE is today to what it drops to, those homes that are in place that way and do not do any major modifications or do not rebuild, their homes won't get set to that four-foot freeboard. They will be in those waters that will occur about once every other year.
Councilman Peters?
I've got a quick question. I'm going to preface this by saying I'm not an expert in flooding, but my understanding on the flood event that happened down in McCook Lake this summer was that the homes that were destroyed were taken out of the floodplain by the city and therefore did not have flood insurance, and so they were at a total loss. But FEMA came in and is assisting those folks anyway. So I guess, and I, and I don't know the answer to this either, but if those folks got help from FEMA that were not in the floodplain, is there a concern that we wouldn't be eligible as well if we go this route? Am I making sense? Do you know where I'm, do you know where I'm going with this?
Yeah, I do. I guess my response to that, Councilman, would, is that I would heed caution to the speculativeness of that mindset. We'd be speculating that maybe someday if we could point the finger back to McCook Lake and maybe someday possibly get what they got. It is speculative, but it's possible.
I do think also, so the, the city itself would not have the ability to remove those properties out of the floodplain. That would have happened through their firm updates. And having come from a, an Iowa community not far across the border, they went through this about four years ago with all of the, the map updates. And the FEMA assistance sometimes doesn't cover what flood insurance, from a dollar amount, right? Like, you know, it's like 50%. I've, I have some connections still in Northwest Iowa who also dealt with similar flooding. And for some of those properties, it was 25%, which is better than nothing. But I, I just think there's a lot of unknowns. My question was simply, I just want to make sure we're not doing anything that's going to cut us out of potential funding.
Yeah. Councilman Peters?
I'm good.
Councilman Jurens?
So what I'm trying to get a grasp on is that if they lower this, and whether you have flood insurance or not, everyone still has the option to buy it. They could have bought it on McCook Lake. This would, by lowering it, seems to me it would trigger more FEMA dollars coming into our community. It sure wouldn't take any away. Why would it take it away just because they lowered the, the base level?
I, I was just asking if it would or not, because I just don't know.
It's a general, it's not, it's not directed to you. You're just a city manager, so I usually talk to you about everything. So, so FEMA, FEMA's triggers to come in and help a community is flooding, not what their base level has been at. That's why they came in and helped the McCook Lake people. It wasn't about, I mean, if you, yes, yeah. So to point out, FEMA doesn't come in with a lot of personal dollars, individual dollars. Those homeowners, so let me just preface this. There's probably two people on the, in the room that went through the flood of 97. The FEMA dollars did not help a lot of people. It was flood insurance. The, the McCook Lake people, the Lake Compesca people, the, the western side of, of Watertown that flooded along the river, FEMA wasn't a huge help to the individual, but it did help the city in a bigger impact. By them lowering this, that doesn't, it doesn't seem to me it would stop more dollars or it wouldn't trigger less dollars.
No.
Brandy?
No, I agree with that. It's just really the requirement of if they have to have flood insurance or not, but you're right. A homeowner can decide to still get flood insurance and, but it's really the biggest thing with this lowering of the base flood elevation is just the accuracy and then the protection of the construction of homes where it just, it would, you would constantly be looking at, like, if I were a homeowner on Lake Compesca and if I, if my lowest finished floor was below 1724.8, because that proves to be pretty accurate of what we've seen in the past, historical crests and everything, I would probably still have flood insurance.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Are you adding on to the answer of the question?
Yes.
Okay, Director?
Yes. The, the money the city would get from a flood event like that, no, I don't think that'd be compromised, but you would drastically be compromising the reimbursement those homeowners would get from their property being destroyed. That would be my concern. And when we're looking at data that we're now on record citing and we know is inaccurate, you, you can't have a BFE occur every two years. That's simply errant information. I would heed caution in embracing these BFEs that they're proposing under the new firm maps because of the detriment to each, an individual homeowner out there. Unbeknownst to them, six months from now, six years from now, cancel their home and flood insurance, they, they will not get as much money as they would have had, had they had flood insurance. That is a certainty. The flood insurance will protect their property, will protect their investment. What the city gets because of a natural disaster is not going to substantially cover each and every property owner around that lake that gets flooded.
I want to go to Councilman Danforth?
Mayor, a couple of comments. First question, Mr. Van I, the 1724.8 would have been an elevation that would have been previously set by FEMA, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it seems really odd to me that, when would that have happened, you know?
Our last updates were what year?
2009.
2009.
Well, 15 years ago. And all of a sudden, now, whatever, maybe it's the data or maybe whatever it is, it's opinion, now we're able to drop it four feet. Seems really odd to me that something's come around. And I'm going to use this, may or may not be relevant, but I, to me, it's a red flag when we drop something that they spent so much time establishing in 2009. And now we're dropping it, we're not dropping it six inches, we're dropping it four feet, 4.3 feet. So to me, that's a red flag. If in fact the data is wrong, I think we have an obligation to try to make sure that the data is correct. And if they can come back and support their 1720 and say that's why, then I think, then we're responsible. In some of the meetings that we've had with the Corps of Engineers, since 1997, I've always heard that that flood was a 100-year flood. Now that's a 49-year flood. So I'm going, oof, that's a, that's a big difference. And so things change, don't know how they change like that. The other thing that we are doing, at, at least my understanding, FEMA's funding is, is established by Congress. So we're putting our, our trust and our faith in Congress that they're always going to fund this to some, some amount. We don't have that ability. So that's a lot of faith that we are, are putting there. I look at it and I'm trying to apply common sense and say, nine out of 20 years, we've exceeded that 19, or that 1720. Is it, is it, from our standpoint, is it responsible for us to accept something that we know half the time at least in, in the last two decades has proven wrong? You know, because I, I understand, Councilman Jurens, I know what you're saying because I'm on, I'm the same way, except, problem of it is, insurance is one of those things that a lot of people don't pay a lot of attention to. They have to pay it, they, but when it comes to flood insurance, people buy properties, they sell properties, they build, and then all of a sudden, they go, oh my goodness, now I got to have flood insurance or I don't have, I should have, didn't know I had to have or should have had flood insurance. Because it's one of those things that people just have a tendency to not consider at times, especially if it's not required. The last thing I would want to do is, because of the, the changes that are taking place with establishing some of these things, if we don't do, as, as Ms. Hampton had suggested, that we stay at our current height so that we've got this, what'd you call it, a freeboard?
Yep.
Whatever that is. If we don't stay there and we start allowing new construction at this 1720.5 plus a foot, and all of a sudden FEMA comes back five years, 10 years from now and says, oops, we were wrong, it really should be 1724. If we don't do that, are we really doing the public justice? I would question if we are. So I, I think we have to question the data. We have to question the data. We suspect it's wrong. To me, that's the responsible thing. If it's right, then FEMA should be able to justify it. If it's not right, then I think we're doing the right thing. Just my opinion.
Thank you. Councilman Beeler?
Thanks, Mayor. Mike, I think you're on the right track. And, and, you know, I think if we look at 97, we should have plenty of data on 97. The question is then, do we want to be at 49 years? Do we want to go, how much do we want to go above that? I agree, Brandy, or Ms. Hampton, sorry, that we should raise that freeboard from where it was prior to. I remember we did that maybe two years ago, put it to where it is today. But I'm curious as to how it works for a bank, if we take something out of a floodplain or a floodway and, and. and somebody's got a note on that property, it gets flooded, and they didn't buy any insurance, flood insurance, is the bank stuck with nothing? I mean, if that, if that property's flooded, if it's ruined, how does that work? You know, so once that data, once that gets out there, I mean, that's, that's a touchy subject. You know, I know, and I'm not sure, I think, do you need CLOMARS and LOMARS in floodway, or floodway and floodplain, both? I don't know.
It depends. CLOMARS are more so for floodways, to have a no-rise certificate, if you're going to propose a project that would be encroaching in a floodway. And then LOMARS are any map change, or revision, where it can just be when you fill your property, and then you get a LOMAR and take it out.
And I don't recall, I don't know what the acronym stands for exactly, but I do know it stands for a hell of a lot of money, if you gotta get one. It costs a lot of money, and it takes a long time. If you, if you're in a floodway, and you want to add on to your property, you want to make revisions to that property, you gotta go through that process, thousands of dollars. And they can say yea or nay on that thing. So this is going to have an effect, I would think, on that. But just, to me, again, like somebody said earlier, common sense. I mean, we, whoever's establishing this, I would think there would be some sort of recourse for somebody, somewhere, if we're not accurate with where this sits. And certainly, I think a lot of folks, you know, you're selling a house, God, I don't want to have to, you know, sell it with the pretense that I've got to buy. They have to buy, you know, flood insurance on this house. Well, if it's in the flood elevation, if it truly is, they need it. But if somebody says, no, it ain't, well, Bob's your uncle. You don't have to have that insurance anymore. So just some concerns.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have a question for Councilman Jurens. He might be the best one to answer this. Are the rates different, depending on where these elevations are set at? And so are they lesser expensive if the elevation is 1720 versus 1724? Would the rates be less? You still get full coverage, I would assume, for whatever property loss, but is there a difference in rates, I guess? If someone were to say, free will, I'm going to get, I'm going to get flood insurance, even though I don't, I'm not required to it, that it would be smart, most likely, to do that, but then the rates probably aren't going to be near as high, I'm assuming they aren't going to be as high as what they would have been. Just if someone could answer that.
Councilman Jurens?
So, I am not here to argue the data, the data that FEMA is putting out now, or will come back with. I am here to talk about what Councilman Shuddy's question just was. The rates for people since 2009 have gone through the roof. Where they qualified for a preferred rate policy in 2009, that has gone up to 1,500, $2,000. In our house in 1997, that was like $250. And they fully paid for the flood damage. That policy today would be 2,000. So you're taking extra money out of our residents' pockets. The market value of properties along Sioux, the Sioux River, has gone down considerably. Brandy brought up first-time home buyers. Less of them qualify, because there was more properties brought into the floodplain, and now they have to add that 1,700, $2,000, $1,200 policy to the, the numbers that the bank is proposing. Does that help?
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you for that. That does absolutely help. Now, earlier, was it mentioned that we did reach out as a city to FEMA to review these numbers? They just haven't gotten back to you yet? Is that correct?
They've gotten back, but only to respond that, to steer us through the formal appeal process that we're in right now.
Okay.
That was their response.
They recommend this is how we should go about for them. Because if the data is, like Councilman Danforth is saying, and others, if the data is absolutely wrong, well then, you know, because that's a miscalculation on their end, you know, well then, sure, you know, they're probably going to have to change it. But if it isn't, I don't want to, like, force them to raise it up. And, you know, if we can, if people have the free will to get house, homeowners insurance, or flood insurance, that is, at a, at a much better rate. Another, one last question, then, would be, we're talking about this particular caveat, but is there other, are there any other, on this appeal, any other items sticking out? Or is this really the main one that we're appealing for?
There was, there was the lake base flood elevation, and then some other tributary and Big Sioux River base flood elevation questions that we had thrown at them as well.
Pelican, too.
The Pelican as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If I could just add to with what Director Von I said about, so we definitely, after we had our public open house in 2022, July of 2022, you know, we sent out, we had a PSA, we sent out individual letters to people who were going to be negatively affected. And that's not only for, well, Lake Compeska, that, that actually, that will be, that would have been an improvement, because it would take them out of the floodplain, but it would be a detriment for their protection. But just throughout, you know, really through the Big Sioux, Robey Creek, and Willow Creek, there's nominal changes, except there are specific people that, you know, they, I believe that we have 98 LOMAS, which is a letter of map amendment, that would be unvalidated through these map amendment, or this map amendment, or new proposed maps. So we reached out to them individually, and a lot of it was just because there had been a slight change in the base flood elevations that either put, depending on their property situation, that put them back into the floodplain. But the ones that are more concerning, as that Councilman Beeler had touched on, were the CLOMAR/LOMARS that people went through, that are now would be reval, or unvalidated through what they're proposing. So then those specific properties, we have addressed those with FEMA as well, with this appeal. And like Director Von I stated, when we, we have been working with them very diligently for these last two years, ever since we received our preliminary maps, which we received the first ones in March of 2022, and then worked with FEMA through their process to have that public open house in July. And then, yeah, we've been addressing it, and then it was just the, we can't, they're, they don't have, like, they can't, just through their process, they couldn't put a pin in it. It had to get to the appeal period, and this formal process that we're in now. And we've been very, I guess, just aware and diligent with being, having, being in touch with HDR, to have them look into the model, and then make sure that we're getting the appeal, we're getting our appeal in well, you know, we're like, well within the window of the appeal period. So, because it is, I think it's really important to our community.
Councilman Dan, or Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. So, in the appeal, can, do we have to state exactly what we want, meaning we want it at 1724 point, whatever? Or can we ask for the detail and validation of why they lowered it?
It'd be the latter of the two.
Then make a decision based on the response?
Yeah, it'd be the latter of the two examples you gave, where we would question the results that they've provided, and how those results, how those results were obtained, and whether there isn't additional research and calculations that need to be made, to make sure that they're as accurate as possible. I think by, you know, the simple facts of showing them, nine out of 20 years are going to exceed the proposed BFE, that then should put them on alert to say, all right, we need to get back to the calculations here and figure out where we missed the mark.
And I would encourage you guys, too, that the memo is attached to the agenda, and then that points out, that is exactly what we're going to submit as far as the technical data. So it's actually, it's, it's well-written, where it's very understandable, doesn't get too technical in the terms. So I would encourage you to just be informed on, on that, and exactly what, what our appeal will be, and it is well done.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, and this is for some of the data that we did receive from them earlier. Some of the graphs that we, they showed us, and my question is, is the gauge height, is that, is that supposed to be representative of the lake level, or is that, it is? So if I look at that, that's, you know, the, it's over, it's around 20 feet. Is that correct? I mean, an average there would be, the BFE is 20 feet, roughly 20, well, 19, just 19 and a half feet roughly. So I gotta believe the gauge somehow or another, when they measure that gauge level, is somewhere, you know, they've got a hole in the ground or something where they're gauge measuring, because there's, I fish out there, I go on that lake, and it is never that, you know, deep. So that's my question.
So there is a conversion factor between, like, actual feet and then the NAVD 88 elevation datum that they use. So it is, it is a conversion factor.
Because it would appear that's lake level to most folks. So, wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Yep.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, I guess, my own thought on this would be, the Corps of Engineers are going to base, if this were to pass to be appealed, they're going to base it off of their data. They're not going to, our appeal, by no means has this clout that they're going, oh, that's what the City of Watertown wants, I guess, maybe we'll raise it up to this level. It's going to be based off of their data. It just tells them to go back and double-check their data. This isn't us saying, this is how we want it. And this is, you know, do what we, do what we think. I just want to make sure that it's going to be date, you know, based off the data versus what we think as a council.
I guess I would, my question was going to be very similar to that, which is, so what happens next? We submit an appeal, and they go back through it, and if they think that we're right, then this all goes away? But I have a hard time thinking that. I mean, would it go back to the 2009 levels, or would they say, we've got to come back and redo all of our tabulations? And then, how long is that going to take?
Yeah, so they would, they'll, they'll collect all the appeals, of course. There might be individual property owners that go ahead and appeal on their own behalf, which is A-OK, that's expected, and a normal part of the process. And then, when they see ours as a community, if this is what we want to send off to them, they would go back to the drawing board, they would work with us, they would look at the data, and try to figure out what their discrepancies are at, and try to ensure a higher level of accuracy in their mapping. And I think that would get them, again, this is an assumption of mine, but again, they're working globally on several counties. It would get them to hone in specifically, not only on Cottington County, but right here in Watertown specifically, and look at what they've missed the mark on with, with flow calculations and assessments. And that process could drag out, Mayor, for a good several months. Indeed, it's been a long process already, so.
No matter what, we still have, our 2009 maps are effective.
And conversely, if they look at our appeal and are not interested and don't want to, they say, no, we're comfortable with what we have, then do we have to accept what they submit to us?
I've not faced that challenge in any communities I've worked with in the past. A community has the option to adopt or not adopt flood insurance rate maps. It does affect their CRS rating, their flood insurance eligibility. Those are some nuances we would have to work through and figure out, if that's the, if that's the curveball we're throwing.
Okay. Councilman Danforth?
Are we the ones that identified the nine times that it went over the proposed 1720.5?
Yeah, it was either staff or HDR pointed that out.
Okay. So my question is, of that nine, you know, we're at 1724.8, down to 1720.5, where are those nine at? Okay, we know those nine exceeded 1720.5, but it was, were they, where were they at in regards to the 1724.8?
Do we have those exact numbers with us?
I think that they included it. I could look on the packet. I believe they included the historical crests, and that would have came from the National Weather Service that they have available. If I just pull that up quick. If it's not in the report...
Did any exceed the 1724.8?
No.
So we know now that they didn't get there, but we know they're above 1720.5.
Mm-hmm.
So, is it an inch above 1720.5? Or is it 10 inches? Is it three feet? To me, that's important data, for me, because if it's barely going over that, then we know the issue is less, at least in those nine incidents, than it would be if they were significantly over.
Well, like I said, I know for, in 2023 or two, okay, I'm going to say, as I'm recalling, maybe not that I know, we were in the 1722.65 area. We're going to see how good my memory is there.
I used 22 for a member.
Or whatever, yeah, 17, oh, in 2022. Yes.
Yeah, I don't know the actual number.
And then I think it was at 1722.65. All right. Here, here they are here. But they don't have them in the, they don't have it converted, which the National Weather Service does, if I pull that up. But actually, we just go, so we add, basically, you start at 1,700.99, and then add these numbers to that. So, like, we could, you can say, like, we can just add one to make it easy. So we were at, 97 was 1723, no, 1724. You're having to do math. I don't know if that's my strong suit. Does everyone want to do mental math? So, 2010, 1723.5, 1722.8, 1722.6. Okay, so 1722.8 in 2009, 1722.68 in 2019. So, I mean, even just looking at that, knowing where our range is, obviously, on the lower end, that we're starting high. So we have 97, 2010, 2009, 2019, 2011, 23. So if we know that the highest that it was in 97 was 1724.7, which is really close to our base flood elevation, and then in 2016, it was 1717.25. So...
Which is below the 20.
That's low. But these are just historic crests for spring flooding. The elevation of Lake Compeska at full is 1719.1. But, you know, with that historic crest flooding, all of that stuff, that'll actually be discussed in greater depth tomorrow with the Corps. More so than, I mean, obviously, it's very much tied to these FEMA map updates, but we can kind of get into all of those details tomorrow.
Isn't it possible that the real answer really isn't 1720, and it's really not 1724? Maybe it's somewhere in between?
That, yeah, and that could be.
I mean, and let's just, for giggles here, say that it's 1722.7. I made that number up. And that covers everything except the 97 flood. Maybe somewhere in between is really the right number, in which case, we're still looking for accurate data. into consideration, you know, Mr. Durand's concerns, which I agree with, is we don't want to put any more expense on people than we have to. So to me, that's important information that at least should get looked at, you know, maybe our, I don't, and I'm just saying this, maybe the fight isn't to go from 1724 and stay there. Maybe it's 1723 or 22. So I'd just...
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one last question, a couple maybe, but last time. So what is, how much time do they use to establish a flood level? We're saying that Lake 97 was a 49-year event. So they take those elevations, and, I mean, where do they go from there? Is that, how, what's the magic number that they want to set at for a floodway and a floodplain? I'm not sure I understand that.
Councilman, if I understand your question right, the modeling is trying to most accurately, excuse me, most accurately exhibit a rain event that occurs once every 100 years. And so there's really not a target number they're seeking. It's taking the flood information data, the runoff information that we've got, the science behind drainage calculations, flow rates, runoff rates, based on the land above us that's coming down towards us, which is 99% agricultural land. And it's putting all that into those drainage calculations and looking at the frequency of events, and they're trying to establish how high that water gets, you know, one every 100 years chance of getting to that elevation. So I don't know if I helped answer your question or not, but there's really not a targeted...
You kind of did, but where do we establish where it's a floodway and it's a floodplain?
So the floodway...
I mean, I know a floodway typically would be like adjacent to a river or where the water flows through.
Yeah.
Versus a floodplain. But, you know, you've got to establish an elevation that says, okay, this is a floodplain, this is a floodway.
No, that's a great question. There is an easy distinction between the two. A floodway in the firm maps, as they're established by FEMA, says this is the channel that it takes to get the 100-year event through this waterway, through this watershed. The floodway is what you are not supposed to obstruct, you're not supposed to fill, because that's the width of a river, for example, that you need to convey the 100-year event through your community. The floodplain, it's otherwise known as the flood fringe, is an expanse beyond the floodway that you can fill, and it's actually designed to be able to fill the floodplain through the regulatory process and not impact the floodway. So the floodway says, don't touch this. This is what you need to convey the 100-year event. The floodplain says, you can touch this, but you got to do it under regulatory and formalized way. The fill has to be monitored. It has to be approved through the building permit process, all the things you have to do to fill in and develop in a floodplain. It can occur, but they give us that fringe area to help ensure we're not going to impact the floodway. The floodway is the no-touch zone. You don't do anything in there, except for in extreme circumstances where it gets approved. And then the floodplain or the flood fringe is where you can develop. You just have to do it in an orderly regulatory fashion.
Councilman Tupper.
I feel a lot smarter than I was when I come in here tonight. I feel like I learned a little bit of engineering and hydrology. But really, the question in front of us tonight is, do we want you guys to appeal it? All this stuff, if it's appealed and they come back to us, all this stuff we'll address at that time. Because right now, we could sit here for days and go through this. So my point is, do we agree that we want staff to appeal this?
Seems to me to be the question. Councilman Peters? City Manager Mack? Everyone speak into your microphone if you have something to say.
It's just acknowledging the intent to appeal.
Yeah.
Sorry, I wanted to make sure I got the language right.
Just, I have one question before we go to the vote, but this is just to say, FEMA, we disagree with your assessment. It's not, you're not offering an alternative suggestion. Correct? Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. So we will take it to a vote. So all you're doing is acknowledging that we are appealing the FEMA's maps. So that's all we're doing, is acknowledging that that is what we are doing. So if you're in favor of doing that, you'll say aye. If you're opposed to that, you will say no. Please call the roll.
Holleen?
Aye.
Durand's?
No.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we are on to item 12B, which was item 7F, which is authorization for the Chief Financial Officer to issue a special check to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the Flood Control Feasibility Study Project Number 2118 in the amount of $225,000. City Manager, do you want to take that?
Sure. I sure can. Assistant Director Von I, and, yeah, it'd be Justin. He's not here. Can he answer any other questions you might have? What you have in front of you is a special check because they've asked for payment outside of our normal payment process. If this had been within our normal cycle, we would have just processed it, and you would have seen it on the bills and warrants. You may recall that we entered into an agreement with Corps of Engineers. The total study was 1.8 million. The city's share of that was $900,000. This $225,000 brings us to the $900,000, of which $450,000 is being reimbursed by the state. So it's just, because it's outside our normal process, we're asking you to let us write a special check for it, to get them paid on the schedule that the federal government needs it. Stand by for any questions.
All right. Thank you. So the motion will be to authorize the special check. Can I get that motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Open it up for any questions or comments. Councilman Danforth?
Our approving this special check to be issued has no bearing, it's purely paying for work performed. It has no bearing as to what our position is individually or as a body on the outcome of their work.
That is correct.
So that has no bearing on this. It's purely, they did the work. We may or may not like it, or we may agree or disagree. Has nothing to do with it. We're paying for work done.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll take this opportunity to highlight a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30, I think it is, 5:30? 5:30 at the Watertown Events Center that will be held mainly by the Army Corps of Engineers to reveal their tentatively suggested plan for flood mitigation in Watertown and basically just in Watertown, but the surrounding area as well. So the community is all invited and encouraged to come if you have a question about that. There are lots of things that have been proposed on that, and there has been some confusion, and I guess I'm taking this opportunity to comment, like Councilman Danforth has brought up. The City of Watertown entering into a financial agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers is not us saying we completely agree with them or we champion their suggestion. It is just that we have to address the flood issue in Watertown. We are happy to do so because it is something that is very important to the entire community. And one of those steps in order to do it is we have to fulfill the federal requirements of entering into partnerships and going through these studies. So that is what we're doing, and we gather a lot of information, and we will see what comes of it. We are not sure, and that's why you are encouraged to come tomorrow, to voice your opinion upon the tentatively suggested plan. Anyone else on the council? Councilman Durand's?
It sounds like this is part of the $900,000 that was previously approved. There seems to be a number floating around of 2.25 million total. What other expenditures have we possibly made?
We've not expended any other dollars beyond what we've been authorized for. There will be a request coming at some point in the future from the Corps to add to that. We don't have any additional information on that at this time.
Excuse me, City Manager. So you know that a request will be coming, but you don't know for what?
Right. So attached to the agenda is their request to raise it from 1.8 to 2.6. I've not been part of, and I think Heath has maybe not been part of any extensive conversations on what that additional work or what those additional dollars are for, but they do desire to have a conversation about it. That's not related to this payment. That would be above and beyond.
Will we have the ability to say no?
Sure. I mean, I'm not sure what that additional work would be. That's a better question for Director Von I.
I don't want to make a facetious comparison, but if you're working with a contractor and the contractor says, I know I'm going to ask you for more money, even though you're not quite satisfied with the work I've already done, and you don't know when I'm going to be done or what I'm going to come up with, I would not enter into a contract with that builder. So I guess, I just want to know if we're protecting ourselves. I know that we've had to do certain steps along the way, but I don't want to enter into a partnership where one of the partners can continually ask the other, namely us, for more money. Director Von I?
Yeah, Mayor. Would you like a response to that?
I guess if I'm off-base, yes, or actually, just, yeah, please, more information.
No, not off-base, but just for point of clarity, the additional ask has to do with scope creep, like would normally happen on price increase for a project like this, where they're cranking out design criteria, alternative factors for different alternatives for the flood feasibility plan. That's the general high-level summary of what I've heard from the city engineer on why the cost has gone up. We are not at any level of obligation yet to pay that increased cost. What would happen if we did not, though, I, the study would probably cease, and we would all go quietly into the night with nothing much to go from, other than the tentatively selected plan that we'll be talking about tomorrow night. But those are definitely discussions we need to have with them and ask any types of questions we want to related to the cost increase, to make a good educated decision on whether you want to entertain forking out those additional payments. One thing we would also do as a staff, if we do proceed with the study, with the increased costs, is also go back to the state and see if they wouldn't cost share those increased costs with us, like they did the initial 1.8.
The sponsor's share of that increased cost would be roughly $350,000. So, but again, we're not, that's not related to the check, the special check for this evening. That'd be a future conversation for you all to decide.
And you're right. I mean, the matter at hand is just if we're okay with issuing the check at this point, which we pretty much agreed to. I just, sorry, I was getting ahead of myself, talking about future possible negotiations with the Corps. Director Von I?
We do, Mayor, plan to have, well, there's a works, it'd probably be work session discussion about this item. We just don't have enough technical specifics yet, but we'll be bringing that forward as soon as possible, so that we can vet any concerns or questions related to the price increase. Thank you, Director. Councilman Danforth?
Mayor, if I may, I've just got a question on the meeting for tomorrow, as I was asked this. Is this going to be purely a presentation? Will there be input and question-answer type thing that, you know, because the Corps, this is their business, this is their presentation, correct?
It's the Corps jointly with city staff.
Okay, so we will have city staff there and present for this?
Correct.
Okay. And there will be an exchange of questions and...
Correct.
Aspirants, okay.
Correct. It's part of their public comment period. So, holding this public open house, yes, they anticipate, whether written or verbal comments at the meeting, related to the tentatively selected plan.
Councilman Tupper?
Yeah, if y'all remember not, just too long ago, we did give them permission to go to the, for the public information.
Another thing to note for tomorrow's meeting, comments have been submitted, particularly by the Lake Compesca Water Project District. They have been received by the Corps. You will not see those comments reflected in the presentation, as they were just received, I think, last week. But much like our FEMA appeal, it's part of the process that then they will go through and study the requests, study the data further.
All right. The motion is to authorize the special check. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Please call the roll.
Holleen?
Aye.
Durand's?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. Councilman Danforth?
This isn't an announcement, but I want to take the opportunity. The one thing I love, I love good service, and I love people that appear to be doing a really good job and like what they're doing. It's my semi-annual tree trimming time of the year, so I've made, you know, four or five loads of stuff out to the landfill. And there's a gentleman out there, and I don't know his last name, but his first name is Jeff, that this gentleman is so upbeat, he is so helpful. This morning, I went out there, he says, welcome to the Wardtown landfill. And I'm going, he just, I really enjoy him, and I just want to recognize him. I don't, again, I don't know his last name, but he makes that enjoyable go out, and he gives my dog treats. So it's great.
That would be Jeff Ward.
Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you. I just want to add a little announcement that, you know, the last five years, whenever I say the pledge of allegiance, it always means more to me, because my son went to the Marine Corps. And as of this last weekend, he is officially home from his five-year service and done with, done with his career with the Marine Corps currently. And I'm just glad to have my son back, safe and healthy.
Thank you. Any further announcements? City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few things. First and foremost, we've had a request from Harmony Hill. They are having an event on October 5, and they would like to serve adult beverages at it. They need a special event license in order to accommodate that. And so we would need to call a special meeting, just to approve that special event license, because it's required to be publicly noticed. I'd recommend we have the meeting on September 30 at noon. Does that not work for anyone? Should be a relatively quick meeting, because we have to publicly notice it. That's why we need to set the date. You can call in. Like I said, it should be relatively simple meeting. Is that, will that not work for anyone?
September 30.
I don't know, because you're like, you're very pensive.
30th at...
September 30. Yep.
September 30 at noon.
Okay. Kim, that's when it's going to be. Secondly, yeah, just a reminder that tomorrow at 5:30 at the Events Center is the meeting with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We hope to have a good turnout and a good discussion. Lastly, if you will indulge me for just a few minutes, Mayor, I would like to talk about IM-28 and thank Mr. Wyland for being here. I do believe they had a forum this evening on that and a couple of other measures, so they're not here to hear my questions and maybe my comments on IM-28. First, I'd like to share with you directly from the Attorney General's explanation of IM-28, which may lend you all to understand why there's some ambiguity and confusion around it. So the explanation says, currently, the state collects tax on the sale or use of certain goods, including food and drinks. Many municipalities also collect these taxes. This initiated measure prohibits the state from collecting sales or use tax on anything sold... from collecting sales or use tax on anything sold for human consumption. And the measure eliminates these sources of revenue for the state. Human consumption is not defined by state law. However, its common definition includes more than food and drinks. The measure does not prohibit the collection of sales tax, or excuse me, collection of sales or use tax on alcoholic beverages or prepared food. Prepared food is defined by law to include food that is sold heated or with utensils. The measure may affect the state's obligation under the Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement and the Streamlined Sales Tax Agreement. The Master Settlement Agreement resulted from multi-state lawsuits against cigarette manufacturers for the public health effects of smoking. South Dakota's annual share of the Master Settlement Agreement is approximately 20 million. The Streamlined Sales Tax Agreement is a multi-state program designed to simplify the collection of sales and use tax for companies selling in multiple jurisdictions. Judicial or legislative clarification of the measure will be necessary. The measure does say, under the fiscal note, that municipalities could continue to tax anything sold for human consumption. However, what the measure does not do is repeal SDCL 1052-2, which is imposition of tax conformance to state sales and use tax and the rate, which says any incorporated municipality within this state may impose any non-ad valorem tax in accordance with the provisions of this chapter, except upon fuel used for motor vehicles by ordinance enacted by its local governing board. However, no tax may be levied on the sale, use, storage, and consumption of items taxed under Chapters 1045 and 1046, unless such tax conforms in all respects to the state tax on such items, with the exception of the rate, and the rate levied does not exceed 2%. To go further into this, the city of Watertown, and I'm only speaking for our community, is a home rule charter community. South Dakota is a Dillon's rule state that allows home rule charters. So a Dillon's rule state means that communities are only allowed to do what the state says you are allowed to do. It has said you can be a home rule charter community within these specific guidelines. And if you look at South Dakota Codified Law 61214, which is home rule charters, taxing powers are limited. No county, city, or other governmental units chartered under South Dakota Constitution, Article 4, Section 2, unless otherwise specifically provided by statute, may enact or increase in any form a tax, fee, or charge that is, one, related to the state lottery; two, similar to a tax which provides revenue to the state; or similar to state licensing or regulatory fees enacted by statute or adopted by rule. SDCL 61215, under the same home rule charter section, is the scope of the section. Nothing in South Dakota Codified Law 61214 is intended to authorize any county, city, or other government unit chartered under the Constitution to enact or increase a tax, fee, or other charge that is denied by its charter, the Constitution, or the general laws of the state. There is a significant amount of confusion on whether municipalities will be allowed to continue to collect this tax. And even if they are allowed to continue to collect this tax, there are implications from the state level. Are they going to be willing to collect a tax that they themselves are not allowed to collect? If they are, will they begin charging municipalities and subdivisions of the government for collecting that tax? Additionally, from 2019 to 2024, the city of Watertown received almost $9 million in state grant funding. 3.6 million of that was for grants related to the airport, park and rec, general improvements, and nearly $5 million of that was our STP funds. So our street, or excuse me, our state transportation program dollars. I, I think the authors of this measure had the intent to remove the tax on food and probably had the intent to allow cities to continue to collect it. The confusion within the language is why myself, other city managers, other city councils across the state are very, very concerned about what is going to happen. As we talked about at the last meeting, it's about a 10.4% reduction in the city's sales tax collection. Should it be taken away from us? It's about $2.4 million in revenue, just in direct revenue. And not, not even talking about the grants that we, that we receive or the grants or funding that our partner agencies in our community receive from the state. The Attorney General has said it will need to be clarified by the courts. And we certainly can't rest on our laurels that it's, it's going to be a given that these dollars will continue to come to us. So I just, I wanted to share that. There's a lot of information out there. It's just generally confusing. But I would counter that I don't believe anyone is operating simply to create fear and participating in fear mongering. It's based on what the law says and the ambiguity and how the measure is written. So I'd, I'd stand by for any questions you guys might have on that. Otherwise, we'll see you tomorrow at the flood mitigation meeting.
Any further comments? Hearing none, and there's no reason to go into executive session tonight. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night and God bless you, Watertown.